Krishna Krishna Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama Hare 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 Krishna so Dandit Pranams to all the devotees thank you all for joining in today is twenty ninth of October Sunday today is the first day of the most auspicious Karthik month so we will every day we will be doing this special session where we will be deciding we will be taking a little bit of the Damodar Kathab you've all heard it so we will take one one lesson what we can learn from this Damodar Leela and then we will sing Damodar Ashatukam and then we offer it Dia and then we will recite or otherwise we will start with the recitation of Bhagavad Gita chapter twelve because this will tell us how we can become dear to Lord Sri Krishna and then we will do Gopi Geet prayers from Shrimad Bhagavatam and then we will do then we will discuss Damodar Leela and then we will sing the Damodar Ashatukam and then we offer it Dia and then we will do study of perfect questions perfect answers so that's how we will do it so let's start with our first section which is the chanting of the twelfth chapter of the Bhagavad Gita Om Namah Bhagavate Vasudevaya Om Namah Bhagavate Vasudevaya Om Namah Bhagavate Vasudevaya Chapter twelve devotional service Let me share my screen Arjunavacha evam satata yuktaye bhaktaastvam pad yupaasate ye chaap yaksharam avyaktam teesham ke yo gavitam aha shri vavanvacha maya vesh mano ema nittay yuktaa upasate shradhaya paray opeta sthemi yuktatam ahamata etvaksharam anirdeshyam avyaktam pad yupaasate sarvatragam achintyam chutastam achalam druvam sanyam yendriyagraham sarvatra samabuddaya te prapnavanti maamiva sarvabhuta hi te rataha klesho adigaras teesham avyakta sakta chetasam avyakta hi katthi dukham dehavadhir vaapyade ye tu sarva anikarmani mai sanyas sematpara ananyenai va yogena amdhayant upasate teesham ham samudharta vrittyu samsara saagarat bhavaamena chiratparta maya veshita chetasam mayeva man adatsva mai buddhim nivesaya nivasishya si mayeva atavurdvan samshaya atachittam samada tum na shakno shima istiram abhyasa yogena tato hamichap tum dananjaya abhyase pi samartosim matkarma parahubava madartam api karmani bhugvan sidhim avapsyesi ataita apyashakto si kartum madhyogama shrathah sarvakarma falatyagam tattha guru yataatmaman shriyo hi jnana abhyasaj jnana dhanam vishishyade jnana dharma falatyagasthy agashankir anantaram advishtha sarvabhuta nam maitrahakaran evacha nirvamunira hankara samadukka sukakshame last eight verses now thirteen fourteen fifteen sixteen seventeen eighteen nineteen twenty these gifti qualities that devotee has to develop in order to become dear to Lord Sri Krishna santushthaha sadakam yogi yataatma dhradanischaya mayyarbita manu utte yomad bhakta samme priya yasma nodvi jethe loko lokanoodvi jethe chaya harshamarshavayodvegey to yaha sachamé priya anapikshaha shuchidaksha udasi noogatapyatah sarvarambha parityagi yo madbhakta samé priya yo na hrishyati na tviishtri na shojati na khankshati shubha shubha parityagi bhakti manya samé priya sama shattroja mitrecha tatha maanap maanayo shitooshna sukadukesho sama sangha vivajitaha tulyaninda sudirmoni santushto ye nakene chit aniketa hastiramati timalni priyonaraha ye tu dharmam ratavidam yatoktam par yupaasate shradhana matparama bhaktaashteti vamé priya Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna so next we will go on to the recitation of chapter number thirty one ten point thirty one of Shrimad Bhagavatam the Gopi Geet it's also called the Gopi Song of Separation so yeah I hope you'll be able to see the screen now Om Namah Bhagavate Vasudevaya Om Namah Bhagavate Vasudevaya Om Namah Bhagavate Vasudevaya Gopya uchubho jayati detikaam janmana vraja shrayata invira ashashvadatrahi taita drishyata diktutavakas vaidrata savas vam bijinvate sharadudasye sadujatasat sarasi jodhara shri mushadrisha suratanathate shulkadasika varadanipnato nehakimvada isajalapyaya yaala rakshasat varsha malutat vaidyutanalat prishamayatmajat visvato bhaya prishavatavayam rakshitamohu nakalu gopika anandanobhava agiladehina amanta ratmadri vikhanasartito visvaguttayes akaude evan sattvataankule virachita bhayam krishni dhuryate charanamiyusham samshruthe bhaya karsaro ruham kanta kamadam shirasidehina shri karagraham braja janartihan veerayushita nijajanasmaya atvam sanasmita bajasake bhavat kingkarismano jalaruhananam charu darshaya pranathadehina papakarshanam drancharanugam shri nikethanam pani panaarpitam tepadambujam krnukucheshuna krindi harchayam vidikaririma veeramuyati radarasithuna apyayasvayasvan davakataamritam takta jeevanam gavivirinitam kalmasapaham shravanangalam shri madadatam bhuvigrannanti bhuri dahana prahasat prahasitam priya prema vikshanam bhikaranam chate dhanamangalam rahasisam vidoya hridispreshaha bhukanumanha shobayanti chalasiyadraja charayanpa shun nalinasundaram naatate padam shilatranaankurai seena tithina kalila ta mana kanta gachati dina parikshaye neelakuntalay pana ruhananam vibradhavritam ghana rajaswalam darshayanmuhur manasinasmaram veerayachasi pranathakamadam patmajalchitam daranimandhanam dhayamabadhi charanapankajam shantamam chate tamranasaneesh arpayadihan surathavardhanam shokanashanam swaritavenu na sushtuchumbhitam itara ragavi smaranam vitaraveerana stehadramritam atati adhvaana ahnikananam sudiyugayate etvama paschatah putila kuntalam shri mukam chate jadavikshatah pakshmakrasham patisutanvaya braatrabhandava thivilankyate antyachutagatah tadivitas tabo geetamohita gitavayushita kastya jainisri prahasisamvidam hrichayodayam prahasitananam prema vikshanam brhadura shriyo vikshalamate muratispraha muyate manaha prajavanau kasam vyaktirangate vrjina hantrelam visvamangalam tyajamanakshanas vatsprhatmanam swajanahidham yannishudhanam yatte sujata charanaburuham staneshu vitakshanai priyadadi mahikalkashesho tenata vim atasitadyatatena kimsve purpadi bhirbrahmatidir bhavrayusham Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare Hare so first we read Bhagavad Gita chapter twelve which tells us what are the qualities that actually make one very dear to Lord Sri Krishna and then we decided Gopi Geetam that was recited by of course the Gopi is in separation from Lord Sri Krishna but the Gopi Geetam was actually decided by Pratap Prudhr Maharaj we discussed how Pratap Prudhr Maharaj when he when he was not actually getting the mercy of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu but when he was reciting this Gopi Geetam prayers Chaitanya Mahaprabhu actually embraced King Pratap Prudhr so in this way our endeavor we to recite these verses every day in this auspicious month of Karthik which starts from today October twenty ninth to November twenty seventh so in this way we will please Shri Lepa we will please Chaitanya Mahaprabhu we will please Lord Sri Krishna himself like that okay so now let's go on to the study of perfect questions perfect answers let me share my screen so okay so we discussed chapter seven which is acting in knowledge of Krishna we completed that chapter and then we went on to chapter number eight I think today we will be concluding yeah actually today we will be concluding this book or maybe maybe tomorrow maybe today tomorrow in two three sessions they should be able to complete this book okay so in the previous session we were we were discussing about how Krishna is so merciful that Krishna is actually appearing in the form of archa bigra right which is material which is made up of wood or any metal like that right ashtadatu metals like that so why is a lot appearing in a material form the Lord is appearing in a material form so that we can perceive the Lord with our material senses otherwise we were discussing how even if the Lord comes in front of us and stands before us we will not be able to identify the Lord or we will not recognize the Lord we will not be able to serve the Lord hence the Lord is appearing by his own causeless mercy is appearing in the form of archa bigra thus giving us opportunity to serve the Lord in the form of performing abhishek in the in the form of dressing the deities in the form of offering aarti in the form of offering bogah so in all these ways we are able to serve the Lord personally and this is enabled by the Lord actually by coming down in the form of archa bigra and then also the Lord is incarnated in Kali yoga in the form of his holy names so simply by chanting Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare Hare we will be getting the same benefit of what we will be what everyone got in Satya yoga by meditating in Threeta yoga by by doing yagnas and in Vapar yoga be performing deity worship the same benefit is easily obtained in this age of Kali simply by chanting Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare Hare alright so that's what we were reading so let's go on with the let's continue with that so devotees can raise your hands yeah so this is a conversation between Mr Bob Goohan's wife right Miss Barbara and Sheila Propa so we have some hands raised then you know we can start off anyone would like to read okay Karpa Gavali Madhaji go ahead you can be Barbara and I'll be Prabhupada go ahead Madhaji after we die from there
Yes Madhaji
Alex
Yar Pesham after we die what happens to our spirit
you get another body
immediately
yes just as when you change your apartment you fix up your new apartment first then you leave this one and go there
so we so do we know what type of body we will get
yes provided you are qualified otherwise nature will arrange there's some disturbance I guess okay those who know they know what is there but for those who do not know nature will arrange things if you do not know this means you have not prepared your life so accidentally at the time of death your mentality will create another body and nature will supply it
and chanting what does that what does chanting do
that you can ask these boys the devotees they will explain
if Krishna controls everything how does Krishna control a non-devotee
by Maya just as the government controls everything a kingdom is controlled by the king's departments
and how does Krishna control a devotee
just as you control your beloved for example if you have a beloved child you control him for his benefit if he is going to touch fire you will immediately tell him no no my dear child don't touch it so a Krishna conscious person a devotee is never misled because Krishna is always guiding him whereas those who are not Krishna conscious are in the charge of Maya and Maya will do the needful as you have seen
is it preset where we are when we are born the time and that we will die
what
is that time that I am going to die and others going to die preset before we are born when I am born or do I have a certain given lifespan
yes
and he cannot and he cannot change that
no he cannot change it but Krishna can change it
if he commits suicide is that also preset
not preset that you can do because you have a little independence it is not natural to commit suicide it is unnatural so because we have independence we can go from nature to unnatured a prisoner cannot go out of the prison house naturally but somehow or the other he arranges to jump over the wall and goes away then he becomes a criminal for further imprisonment naturally the prisoner cannot go out of the prison house but if somehow or the other he manages to escape that means he again becomes a criminal he will be arrested again and his turn of imprisonment will be increased or he will be punished more so naturally we cannot violate destiny but if we do it we will suffer but our destiny can be changed by Krishna when we are Krishna conscious we do not do it but Krishna will do it amtvaam sarvapapevyo mokshiishyami maasrjaha Krishna tells in Bhagavad Gita I shall give you protection that change takes place for my protection there are two stages non-devotee and devotee the non-devotee is under the control of material nature and the devotee is under the control of Krishna right mahatmanistumamparta daiyimprakritam ashritaha that means those who are great souls they come under the yoga maya potential of the Lord that means they come under the direct control of Krishna in the office of a big man executive of a big company there are many employees and they are controlled by different departmental superintendents but all the orchard of home he controls indirectly the same man at home is controlling his children directly but he is always a controller similarly God is a controller always when one becomes a devotee is controlled by God when he is a non-devotee he is controlled by his agent Maya but he has to be controlled for example every citizen of America is controlled by the government when he is all right the civil department controls him otherwise the criminal department controls him but he cannot say I am not controlled that's not possible everyone is controlled if somebody says I am not controlled he is not sane he is crazy everyone is controlled so either you are controlled directly by God or you are being controlled by his direct agency Maya being controlled by Maya you spoil your life you remain in material existence one birth after another changing your bodies but if you chose to be controlled by God then after this body you will go back home back to godhead then your life is successful you cannot exist without being controlled that is not possible that is intelligence and it is stated in the Bhagavad Gita bahunam janmana manthay jnannavan mam prapadyadeva vasudevasarvamithi samahatma sudurlabaha after many many births of traveling or speculation one surrenders unto me Krishna you are everything so I have come except me I am fully now surrendered unto you you please control me I am controlled for so long I have been controlled by these rascals there is no benefit I have been controlled by my senses so under the control of the senses I have served so-called family society kanti nation up to serving the dogs but nothing has given me satisfaction therefore now I have good sense I now put myself under your control right is going to ask Gosey Varad Singh ye dhanayoubhanna utraparijana ite ke ache para ti ti re kamalagay chal jeevanatalamala bajahu haripada ni ti re right I mean I mean serving all of these people right but life is tottering away like a like a lotus on water anytime it may it may fall apart but I have wasted my entire life not glorifying the supreme personality of godhead if you know Prabhupada says in one lecture if you are not serving God you will be serving dog so instead of being controlled by dog let me be controlled by God this is Krishna consciousness have you not seen how a man is controlled by a dog in the street he the dog stops passes stool and his master must stand in wait is it not he is passing stool and urine and the master is thinking I am master but he is being controlled that is Maya he has become servant of the dog but he is thinking I am the master so unless one is Krishna conscious one cannot understand we cannot we can understand that this rascal is being controlled by his dog but he is thinking that he is the master we can understand what do you think has he not become controlled by the dog
that is so
but he is thinking I am the master of the dog a family man is controlled by his wife his children by his servants by everyone but he is thinking I am master president Nixon is thinking that he is master of his country but he is controlled at once he can be dismissed by the public his servants and he will take a position claiming I will give you very good service and I shall be a first-class servant therefore people vote all right you become president and he is advertising reelect me reelect me that means he is a servant but he is thinking I am master that is a position Maya one who is controlled by Maya is thinking himself master but he is actually a servant and a devotee never thinks to himself I am master only I am a servant that is the difference between Maya and reality he at least knows I am never master I am always a servant when a servant is thinking I am master that is illusion but when a servant is thinking I am a servant that is not illusion that is mukti liberation right we saw yesterday mukti hitvanyatah upam swarupena vyavastithee real liberation is to be situated in our constitutional position because he is not controlled by false thoughts try to think about the subject matter a devotee is never controlled by false thoughts he knows his position swarupena vyavastithee mukti liberation means to be situated in one's constitutional position I am a servant so if I know that I am a servant that is my liberation and if I think that I am the master that is bondage that is the difference between conditioned life and liberated life Hare Krishna so we will stop here now we will go on to the Damodar Ashatukam and this one lesson what we can learn from Damodar Leela today and then we will also offer elabs
very nice
yeah so these questions and answers are really eye-opening right so some people are very much misunderstood that what is liberation liberation means to get you know Sayujya mukti or you know to be with the Lord right but in every every situation what does a devotee really want a devotee always wants service to the supreme personality of godhead that is a constitutional position mukti hitvanyatah upam swarupena vyavastithee that means we should be situated in our constitutional position at all times and we should act accordingly that is jivera swarupah Krishnaera nityadas like that okay so let us go on to Damodar Leela so we all know the wonderful Damodar Leela but let's quickly recapture it we'll just start off so it is Diwali day and Krishna is Krishna is nicely sleeping and mother Yashoda is dressing with nice ornaments and all and then he is coming down in the early morning mother Yashoda is actually churning butter right she is churning buttermilk and to get butter for Krishna so whatever a devotee does a devotee does only for the pleasure of the Lord right it is said that Nanda Maharaj had nine hundred thousand cows and all of the cows gave the best quality milk right and out of those nine hundred thousand cows thousand cows patmaganda cows those gave those were fed very very special grass and special you know food food stuff and in this way those cows gave the best quality milk and out of those thousand right eight important cows were personally fed by mother Yashoda and from those milk right that milk that was cuddled and curd was made and then mother Yashoda is actually churning the buttermilk to actually make butter why is the butter being made so that because Krishna loves eating butter and we all know that Krishna enjoys he is called Navanita Navanita Krishna right he is also called this Vrajay Prasidam Navanita Choram right Bilva Mongal Takur sings this beautiful song we will be singing this song also once in a while because of the time constraint we are not doing it but you should be singing this song also probably in the morning or sometime we can sing right so in this song Viveva Mongal Takur is saying right this is a this is a butter thief who is very very famous so whatever the Lord does right even if it is stealing even if it is theory and becomes well he Lord becomes very famous and he becomes known by that name right Vrajay Prasidam Navanita Choram so like that he is known as the butter thief and is very famous so today's lesson what we learned from here right we just started off this pastime so we will continue daily little by little now and then we will also go into the Nalakwair and Manikirivas pastime so all of this has a very important lesson for all of us right so when mother Yashoda is actually churning the buttermilk you take the butter right she is chanting the holy names of Lord Sri Krishna right and when Krishna comes down she is so happy right she immediately takes Krishna on her lap and starts breastfeeding Krishna so whenever mother Yashoda is doing any of her household chores whether it is churning butter or whether it is cooking on the gas stove right she had kept the milk on the stove and then only she had come and she was churning butter and that one that's when Krishna came immediately when she saw Krishna she took Krishna on her lap right so whether she is boiling milk whether she is churning butter whether she is actually seeing Krishna and offering Krishna her breast milk right whatever mother Yashoda is doing she is always thinking about Krishna seeing the glories of Krishna so that is what even we need to practice right they are ragatmika bhaktas Yashoda maya is ragatmika bhakta so naturally spontaneously they always think of Krishna right but now as sadhana siddhas when you are doing a particular work we get so much engrossed in that that we are not able to think of Krishna there is one very beautiful pastime that comes to my mind actually Narada Muni you know he was asked to take you know this is just to depict that as we are doing our work we should be able to remember Krishna all the time right Narada Muni was asked to go around the world with a spoon of oil you know not you should not be he should not spill even a drop of the oil right and Narada Muni went all around and then he came back and Lord Vishnu said so how many times did you think about me and Narada Muni was saying what you only told me to ensure that not even a drop of oil is spilled huh so this is in the this is in the context where you know when Lord Vishnu said that grastas right those who have so many family